Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, November 22, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dean Wiles from Abundant Grace Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Paul Blazer with the River Riders Motorcycle Club.
Well, again, it's an honor to be able to say this prayer and just want to say we started the day off together, we're finishing it together. What an honor it is to be able to do that. And again, congratulations, Councilmember Jenny Koch and Councilmember Michelle Lynn and Vice Mayor Jim Dolan and Mayor Kalshihi on your accomplishment of being reelected. And so just want to say again, I appreciate you, not only you, but your family for the commitment that they make, you make, to represent our community and to serve our community. So we're going to be praying for each day. And again, just congratulations. So let's just pray. Lord, again, we just thank you for this opportunity. We take time out from the very beginning just to honor and to recognize you. You are awesome. God, you are good. And we just ask you now, Holy Spirit, just to let your peace, let your presence fill these chambers. And Lord, I pray for your guidance, your protection over each person, God, our council, our council, as well as our citizens, Lord, that you would continue to protect, keep them, Lord, even those that are making decisions, give them your wisdom, even tonight as they're voting on different things. Lord, again, we just thank you for this city. And we just pray that you continue to keep your hand upon Lake Havasu City, continue to let Lake Havasu just flourish and be an example city to the rest of our state and our country. Lord, we pray that this city would just be a place where people can continue to just have fun, build great memories, and just continue to keep your hand of protection over our city. Lord, I pray even right now, take a moment just to pray for our fire chief, our police chief, and all the emergency responders, our firemen, our policemen, Lord, that even tonight as they serve, that you keep your hand upon them should they be in a dangerous situation. Lord, I pray that you provide a way of escape. And Lord, I pray that they be able to return home after their shift is over. Lord, continue to keep your hand again upon Lake Havasu City, the people of Lake Havasu, and God bless each one over this Thanksgiving season. And Lord, again, this meeting tonight, may your kingdom come, may your will be done here on earth as it is in heaven. We give you glory and honor. Thank you, Jesus. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, Paul, for being here with the River Riders Motorcycle Club. If you want to share a little bit about your organization?
Absolutely. Well, good evening, Mayor Sheehy, council staff. My name is Paul Blazer. I am the president of the River Riders Motorcycle Club. The River Riders Motorcycle Club was established here in Lake Havasu City in 1976, some 46 years ago, by like-minded individuals who enjoyed riding and to share in the brotherhood of events, together having fun times and creating memories on the road. Our club has a long history putting on and participating in events that help to benefit local charities and individuals in need. One of our more well-known events that is coming up is our annual toy run. This being the 39th year, it draws hundreds of participants from near and far. This year's event will take place on Sunday, December 4, with the event encompassing a ride from Pirate's Den in Parker to the final destination on McCulloch Boulevard's Main Street. We will have live music, a beer garden, food, a 50/50 drawing, and more. Participants, please bring a toy or two to be collected at the conclusion of the ride, and we will work with the Havasu Community Health Foundation Food Bank to distribute the toys to local families in need, making sure that no child goes without a toy at Christmas in Lake Havasu City. Additionally, we are proud to partner with the city at the annual community dinner, supplying lots of toys for the children to receive when seeing Santa. It gives our members great pride and warms our hearts to be able to give back to the community that we are part of and have been established in for over four and a half decades. We look forward to many more years of community involvement and helping wherever, whenever, and whoever we can. Thank you for the opportunity to open tonight's meeting and look forward to seeing you and the whole community come to see all the beautiful motorcycles on December 4 on Main Street. Everyone is welcome to donate. Hope to see you there.
Thank you so much. And thank you for your continued commitment to the youth in our community. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jim Dolan?
Mayor Kalshihi?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five on the agenda is our call to the public. This is where citizens have an opportunity to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. That would mean anything that maybe would come before us and we would be able to vote on. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There's a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your three minutes is up. We do ask that if you are here for one of the items on a public hearing, to wait until that time so we can have a two-way conversation. Otherwise, during Call to the Public, since it's not agendized, we can listen intently to your comments, but we cannot respond. At the conclusion of the Call to the Public, we can respond to any criticism that might be addressed to any individual council members. You don't have to sign up for Call to the Public, and actually, this evening, we didn't have anyone sign up in advance. But if you would like to address council at this time, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the record, and share your comments.
Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, I'm compelled to do this by God. That's all I can tell you. And I'm going to talk about the drag queen show. I can't let this go. There is a growing crisis across our nation, and it is a concerted effort to plant a seed in our children's mind. That seed is meant to confuse our children as to their gender, even to the point of surgically removing their genitalia and having a mastectomy. To allow grown men to dress as women in a public forum and act as women sexually in front of an underage child is morally wrong. These are the formative years. All I'm asking for is that the advertising on Go Lake Havasu website, no children should be allowed to attend that. It's just morally wrong. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And sir, your name, please?
David Leslie.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Move on to item six, which is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is to announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Here in City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, three alternate member vacancies, and Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member vacancy. The deadline to submit applications for these vacancies was November 4. However, the City Clerk's Office will continue to take applications, so anyone interested can submit an application. They are available on the city's website and also in the City Clerk's Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Then item 7.2 is the City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knudsen.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Mayor Yu, as well as Vice Member Jim Dolan and Councilmembers David Lane, Michelle Lynn, and Cameron Moses, all participated in the Veterans Day Parade alongside our Havasu Youth Advisory Council members. Mayor Sheehy was the keynote speaker, and our Judge Mitch Klauley was named the 2022 Veteran of the Year by the Elites' Fraze Funeral Home. So congratulations to all those involved, and a special congratulations to Judge Klauley. The Fire Engine refurbishment program is complete, and you might have noticed the vehicle parked out front for display just this evening at our council meeting. Contractors Fire Trucks Unlimited, and they completed the engine refurbishment in about 10 months. The engine is now in service at Station 5 on Lake Havasu Avenue. The 2007 Pierce Velocity Pumper received a Level 2 refurb, which is the upgrade of all major components and systems of the apparatus that comply with applicable standards in effect at the time the original apparatus was manufactured. Essentially, anything that's mechanical, anything that could be rebuilt, including a brand-new engine, is all part of this package. So it's essentially a brand-new engine, but with the same chassis and electrical and interior that you see there. It is part of the Department's Vehicle Replacement and Refurb program to address our aging fleet and to address our increasing maintenance costs and the excess time that we spend out of service with our engines. As we continue this program, the program will save our city and the taxpayers millions of dollars over the next several years. You'll see Chief Palathus will be coming before the council in the February timeframe and to ask the council for their consideration for another refurb of an existing engine. This engine refurb cost about $350,000. Compare that to a brand-new engine, which would be about a million-dollar purchase. So for about a third of the cost, we're able to put essentially a new vehicle into the fleet. And Pete, or excuse me, Chief Palathus has ensured me that it's going to last 10 years. I'd like to congratulate Bob McMillan for receiving the 2022 CERT Leader of the Year Award, a very prestigious award indeed. Bob, you were nominated for the award for your outstanding leadership in the Lake Havasu City CERT program back in July of this year. The nomination was provided by Fire Chief Palathus, and it was through the National CERT Association. Very impressive career and experience. Bob, you have over 40 years in the fire service, which makes you an excellent choice to serve as the leader of the Lake Havasu CERT team for the last 17 years. Bob's current responsibilities include managing recruiting, training up to 35 volunteers on CERT, reporting volunteer hours on a monthly basis to the fire chief, receiving and coordinating requests to staff first aid operations at various events, very noticeable at the events with the bright green shirts and helping out all those in need, meeting with the event organizers and creating event action plans, holding monthly CERT meetings, and compiling and submitting annual reports summarizing all CERT activities. Congratulations to you, Bob. We appreciate you and all the CERT team members for all the good work that you do. And at this time, Mayor Sheehy and Chief Palathus, if you would, join me up front as we present Mr. McMillan with his well-deserved award.
Thank you. Bob, this is an award from the National CERT Association on your nomination for Team Leader for 2022. I can't tell you how proud that we are that you received this award. And Bob, you know, being a fellow firefighter and the experience that you have and what you have brought, and the individuals here to support you, your influence and your leadership speaks volumes. It is amazing what you have done, and it's amazing that the support that you have within this community, just everything that you have done for the fire department is appreciated. I'm glad that we're together as one now, and I can't say you deserve this so much. And the team itself, too, the recognition that you help us as a fire department, you help us as a city, and we appreciate everything that you have done for us. So Bob, congratulations.
I'd just like to also, on behalf of Lake Havasu City, say thank you, Bob, for your leadership. Your passion and dedication to the cause is contagious, as evidenced by the support you have in this room. We thank you for that. Again, to all of the CERT volunteers, thank you for what you do. This is a complete volunteer effort that helps support and rehab our department, as well as citizens that are in really trying times. So thank you so much for what you do, and congratulations, Bob.
This speech will only last about 20 minutes. There's just a few people that I would like to thank for this award. We have to go back, thank retired Chief Jeff Sayer, sitting up there in the front. 16 years ago, he had the foresight to start the CERT program. And so to Chief Pete, I thank him for having the faith in nominating me for this award. Retired Chief Mike Quiata, in the back there. He put together a 10-page nomination package that was sent to the National CERT Association in Galveston, and I guess it was pretty good. To my CERT team members who make my job easy, they are crazy enough to turn out in 114-degree weather to staff rehab. Or recently, on the Monterey Drive Fire, they worked in a monsoon that lasted over three hours at nighttime. And then just recently, at the Red Rock Drive Fire, they worked for over seven hours in the early stages of this fire, changing over 50 breathing apparatus bottles while staffing rehab. To the firefighters of the city who have accepted us into their family, every time we work with you, to the man, they stop and say, "Thank you very much for being there." Many CERT teams across the country have failed because this bond was never made with a department. To the city council, who provided the funding for the new state-of-the-art rehab rig that we work with, it has been in service since March this year and has already responded to 22 calls. Lake Havasu City CERT is well on its way to exceeding our average of 2,000 hours of volunteer hours each year. And then finally, to my wife, she's supported me for 40 years. And she's going to shoot me when I get home. Thank you all. I'm humbled by this award.
Thank you, and congratulations, Bob. Back to you, Mr. Knudsen.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. The motion is fantastic, all the goodwill and all the things that you do and that CERT team does. Again, we greatly appreciate each and every one of you. We're in the congratulations mode. So, Mayor and Council, as you know, we're celebrating our employees just this next month that have a milestone this year, or those employees that have a 5, 10, 15, et cetera, year anniversary working for Lake Havasu City. And as that date draws closer, I'd like to highlight our employees who are celebrating a significant amount of service, as well as a retirement to announce. And all these employees happen to be in public safety. There are six full-time employees that you see on the left-hand side of the slide that have reached 25 years with Lake Havasu City, including John Boone, Scott Green, Richard Schulenberg, and Jason Stello, all from our fire department, and Captains Troy Sterling, soon-to-be Police Chief Sterling, and Captain Doug Whitaker from our police department. The three full-time employees on the right side of the slide are celebrating 35 years with the city. That's Jill Eckelberger with the police department, and Mark Martz and Kathy Myers from our fire department. Again, 35 years with Lake Havasu City. And I'd like to congratulate Brian Springer, who retired from the Lake Havasu City Fire Prevention Division in our fire department just this month, just a couple weeks ago. Brian was hired in 2014 as the Fire Prevention Assistant and has retired as our fire inspector. Congratulations to each and one of our employees for their passionate years of service with Lake Havasu City, and good luck to Brian and his future endeavors. Reminder that the Community Resource Coalition application deadline is fast approaching, and the deadline to submit your application is Friday, December 9 at 5:00 PM. If you recall, the Lake Havasu City launched a community resource program that brings up to $1 million in ARPA allocations for nonprofits and public service organizations. This program is to support local organizations in the area of food, housing, medical services, agency services, childcare, senior adult care, senior services, or other related social services. Any successful proposals should provide a long-term investment and be transparent and equitable. Projects should align with the council's priorities and improve community health readiness, address negative economic impacts caused by the last several years, aid the populations hit hardest by the recent crisis, and assist the community in responding and rebuilding a stronger, more equitable economy as the community recovers. You can visit the city's website at lhcaz.gov/community-resource-coalition. Or if you have any specific questions and we can help you out in that regard, please contact Trina Ware. She is our finance manager and involved with this program at 854-0735. It's quickly approaching. The entire community is invited to attend the 19th Annual Free Community Dinner, and that'll take place on Friday, December 9 at the community center. The team is offering two different serving times again this year. The early bird serving is at 4:00 PM. The doors will open at 3:30 for that serving, and the second serving will be at 6:00 PM, and the doors will open at 5:45 for that serving. Both servings are first come, per served, and will seat up to 500 people each seating. The dinner is hosted by the community for the community and provides a relaxed atmosphere to share a traditional holiday feast with families, friends, neighbors, and anyone who wants a dose of great community spirit. The turkeys were donated by various local service organizations. They're all cooked by Taher Food Service and prepared by Master Chef Christopher Galaga and Wave Culinary and Hospitality Students. The meal includes, the meal, excuse me, the meal will include turkey, ham, potatoes, gravy, stuffing, dinner rolls, and a vegetable. And of course, there's a choice of pie for dessert, which is donated by Smiths at our local grocery store. There's a rumor that Santa's making a special appearance at both servings with toys for girls and boys, and that's all sponsored by the River Riders Motorcycle Club. Have a Pick, sponsored by Anderson Auto Group, will be on site for both servings and providing photo opportunities. There'll be transportation for those in need. If that is something that you require, please give us a call at 453-7600. And if you want to help volunteer for the community dinner, we're taking volunteer applications, or just please come, we need your help. That'll be at lhcaz.gov/volunteer. I think Bonnie is volunteering. Perfect. For more information, contact Parks and Recreation at 453-8686. Republic Services is hosting our annual free residential household hazardous waste event, and that'll be on December 10 from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Just like it has been the last two years, the event will take place at Fire Station 2, which is located on Kiowa Boulevard. We ask the public that are dropping off items to access the area off of College Drive. There'll be signs throughout the neighborhood to point you in the right direction, and we encourage all of our residents to take advantage of this opportunity to dispose of household hazardous waste items. There are really difficult, it's not easy to dispose of these items. So this is the one time of year if you have paints, thinners, or any toxic materials that need to be disposed of. This is the event. A reminder that city offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday this week, so the closure will take place on Thursday and Friday. Of course, our police and fire services are always unaffected. They're there to serve and protect you. And the, there will be a, Lake Havasu City Police Department will be conducting traffic enforcement details. They'll take place from Wednesday, November 23 through Saturday, and officers will provide enhanced traffic and DUI enforcement during this time, all provided by a grant that was awarded by the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety. And I hope that everyone has a very safe and merry Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor and Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. Item 8.1 is a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License, Roadhouse Market and Butcher at 2011 Swanson Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Matthew Ferrada has applied for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Roadhouse Market and Butcher located at 2011 Swanson Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 10 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions of members of the council for Ms. Williams or for the applicant? Is the applicant? Yeah, could you make your way to the podium just to let us know when you plan to open up and what is your plan to do?
Hello, thank you for having me tonight. Sir, we're planning on opening as soon as construction's done. Right now, it looks like it's going to be the end of December, but the holidays will probably put us back a couple weeks. So it just depends on how things go, but we're planning on this year.
Excellent.
But maybe January.
And then it will be...
Sorry to not really have an answer for you.
Oh, no, I understand, especially in this type of construction. So, and it's going to be a butcher shop, is that?
Butcher, we're mostly going to be doing butcher and produce.
Okay.
When I say high-end, I don't mean expensive. I just mean it's going to be from local fields and such. That's more natural and things like that, that nature.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other questions for members of the council? All right, well, thank you for investing in Lake Havasu. We appreciate it.
No problem.
Yeah. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Roadhouse Market and Butcher, 2011 Swanson Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next is item 8.2, Class B Bingo License Application for Veterans United. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Frankie Lyons has applied for a Class B Bingo License for Veterans United. The bingo games will be held five days a week, Tuesday through Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM at Four Links, doing business as Win-Win Bingo, located at 5601 Highway 95, the shops at Lake Havasu. The application was reviewed internally, and no objections were received. Class B Bingo licenses are dedicated to raising funds for their sponsoring charitable organizations. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance today, or representative of the applicant, I believe, to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant? Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Is the applicant here?
She's not here tonight, Brian.
Okay, I just had one question.
Yes, sir, if you could just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record, and then Councilmember Moses will ask his question.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate what Veterans United does for our community. Absolutely. Are you, is this going to be the slot machine-type bingo, or is this just a traditional bingo license? It is the slot machine-style bingo machines. Okay. All right. Thank you.
And if you could just state your name for Ms. Williams?
Larry Woody Woodrum. I'm president of Veterans United Arizona.
And then Woody also, Councilmember Lane has a question?
Thank you, since you're at the podium. Thank you, and thank you for your service. And will this be helping veterans only in Lake Havasu City, or do you plan on spending the proceeds outside the city?
Only in Lake Havasu. Everything from this goes strictly to our city right here.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Yes, I will.
I will make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Lane?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Revenue approve a Class B Bingo License for Veterans United at 5601 Highway 95, the shops at Lake Havasu.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, and congratulations. Item 8.3 is Adopt Ordinance Number 22-1297, declaring the document entitled 2022 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 5.20 Vacation Rentals, November 22, 2022, a public record, and amending Chapter 5.20 by adopting by reference multiple text amendments to revise definitions, require annual permit, include notification requirements, include additional requirements for a vacation rental, and revise five years. additional requirements for a vacation rental, and revise violations. Mr. Kozlowski?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This item is to adopt changes to the short-term rental ordinance, and with that, I'll briefly go through the presentation that I gave at the last meeting during the introduction of this item, starting with the legislative history. As you all know, in 2016, the state preempted local authority and prevented cities and towns from addressing any concerns as it pertains to short-term rentals. It wasn't until 2019, and most recently in 2022, that we received some additional tools and measures that may or might not address all our concerns associated with short-term rentals. Some of those tools that the state provided cities and towns include a permitting process, emergency contact information, notification to the neighbors, and a city license number displayed on all short-term rental advertisements. Some of those, some of the things are not allowed within a short-term rental as it pertains to this recent legislation, include housing sex offenders, sober living homes, selling liquor or illegal drugs, obscenity, special events, and retail. All these activities are grounds for denial, as well as suspension of a short-term rental application license. The application process is very clear as far as what we can request from the individuals as far as name, address, phone, and emergency contact, TPT number, and agreement to comply with all laws. There are grounds for denial, such as failure to provide application information or fee, which is a $250 fee, owner has a suspended license, false information was provided to the city, or owner or designee was convicted as a sex offender or has a felony conviction as well. Emergency contact is a very important aspect of this. The owner must keep this information up to date on an annual basis. The emergency contact is also responsible to notify the surrounding neighbors, and the emergency contact is responsible and to respond to all incidents at that short-term rental 24/7. As far as suspension goes, there is a three verified violations, as well as one-time verified violations, and those include a felony offense, a serious physical injury, a sexual offender, or a non-residential use within the short-term rental. For each verified violation, there is a penalty. For a first violation is $500, a second violation is $1,000, a third violation is $3,500, and there are additional fines that can be put on the applicant for not applying for a permit, which is $1,000 per month, and as well as not providing accurate contact information. All these processes will go into effect starting March 1st, 2023, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlowski. So we had this item introduced to us at our last council meeting, what's before us today's final adoption of the few additional tools that state law is allowing us to do. We have been working with the state legislature for quite some time to try and address what these issues are, as Mr. Kozlowski said, since 2016, when state law changed, and the first words say that we are preempted from doing anything other than what the state will allow us to do. So we did discuss this last time, but I'll just reiterate, we're not looking to get rid of vacation rentals. We're trying to find a way for peaceful coexistence within our community, where people that own a vacation rental can use their property as a rental as such, but people that own or live in a home next to one can also have peaceful enjoyment of their property. We were able to achieve that ourselves in 2014 with an ordinance that allowed for that coexistence. It worked really great until 2016, when state law changed. And so what these tools are going to do is give us just a few more. It's still not exactly what we need, but we are grateful for Representative Biasucci, Senator Barelli, and Representative Cobb, who really helped push this bill for us. It's so much so that Representative Biasucci actually dropped a bill of his own to try and help address these. His bill wasn't the successful one, but components of his bill made it to this current area. But we really want to create the environment where there's a 24-hour contact, where neighbors can call somebody for immediate response, not a response that's going to take a day or two, or if it occurs Friday evening, won't be addressed on Monday when the city offices open back up. We're hopeful that this will achieve this, but we'll continue to work with our state delegation to ensure that we do have local control. You know, the issues that we face here in Lake Havasu City are just a little bit different than some of the other communities, and we want to be able to do it where all of our residents can coexist in that environment. So are there any questions of Mr. Kozlowski or members of the council? Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, I know that we had some discussion on this, the last time we talked about this. Am I missing on here where they were going to do the background check on the owner or the responsible party? Because I don't see that in here.
Yeah, Mr. Kozlowski?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, when they do apply for that permit, there will be a background check on the applicant.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be written in the ordinance? We just, it's just, that's what we're going to do?
I will. Yes.
Is there a reason it's not?
Not in particular, but to be able to determine whether or not what's required on the statute is met, that background check will be necessary. So that's part of the processing part. That's not, we don't really need a legislative directive saying that that's going to happen. That happens as part of staff through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, we did have, I did have a resident reach out to me via email and wanted to talk about the complaint process. Mr. Knudsen, you and I talked about this, but the recommendation from the citizen was for website filings of complaints and/or using the Havasu Now app, which those are verified, those are options. So if that is an issue that a resident has, they can call code enforcement, they can call our non-emergency number, they can call the, go to our website, excuse me, or the Havasu Now app, but they shouldn't do any of those things until they call the 24-hour contact that is going to be hand-delivered to them prior to the vacation rental happening. So first call would be to the 24-hour contact. If it can't be resolved, whatever the issue may be at that time, then you would elevate it to one of our issues, and that's really what the state law is trying to achieve through this process. Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Could you just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record?
I just have a really weird question from what I saw. I didn't understand, and I know it's weird and not my business, but did it say that sex offenders cannot own the vacation rental home? So I don't understand, are sex offenders not allowed to own their own home or turn it into a vacation rental? Because I, as much as I like to think that they're forever not changeable, never mind, but you know, I just don't understand how you can prevent, tell somebody they can't own a home. You know, like, do you stop murderers from owning a home?
Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Toy, thank you for your question. So what the state law did is it's enabling legislation that enables cities and towns and counties to take actions that make sense based on these parameters that they put in place. So they put in place that a sex offender, a registered sex offender, or a person with a felony cannot own a vacation rental. Doesn't mean they can't own a home. They can own a home, real estate, property, they just cannot own a vacation rental, and that's prescribed in state law.
I guess that just doesn't make sense. Like, how do you stop murderers from owning a vacation rental then? Or burglars, or?
Again, if it's a registered sex offender or they have a felony, that's what's prescribed in the state law, and that will be determined when the background check is conducted, when they file for an application or a permit.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your question. Would anyone else like to address? Mr. Rhodes?
My name's Don Rhodes. You knew I'd come up here. I was going to sit here and be quiet, but I wrote some stuff down, but I don't very seldom use written-down stuff because I don't speak very well that way. First thing I want to say is I embarked on the journey with some of, with very few of the STR owners over a year ago. They don't pay me a retainer fee. It's basically a call-out basis. In doing so, I reached out to Mr. Lane, and I also spoke to a lieutenant who you referred me to at the police department. And during that conversation, I was trying to explain to him what I was trying to do and to expect that if I needed to call the police to assist me with removal of unruly tenants, they would do that. In that conversation, I heard the words "gain compliance" more than once. And I understand that. I understand that your philosophy is to enforce through education. Am I correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that's what this will enable us to do.
Okay. My question is, I'm not opposed to it. I congratulate you, because I'm a citizen here, I don't own an STR, and I don't want my neighborhood inundated by STRs. I congratulate you for taking a proactive approach. What I don't see up here is cost analysis. This is going to cost the city money. There's going to have to be employees that are hired to, one, inspect VRBOs and STRs and verify complaints, because the complaints have to be verified. Now, I'm not employed by the city. I'm not going to respond unless the owner of the property calls me. They are the ones paying me, and I don't think the city would have any expectation that they would pay me, but the neighbor doesn't pay me either. So while I really do applaud these ordinances, I really think before we go much further, I'm not, I don't know what the word is, but I do know there's going to be costs associated with this that the taxpayers should know about. I would rather have two more police officers hired on the department than have an employee that his or her job is to go out to STRs. I don't think it's the taxpayer's responsibility to police short-term rentals. And Ms. Campbell, you've had some conversations with some of my clients also, and the words "front, the city doesn't want to be the front desk to VRBOs," is that an accurate quote?
That's an accurate quote.
Yeah.
That's an accurate quote. We don't want to be-
And the other question is, why are we not citing the tenants in the house at the time of the action? I know the words "gain compliance" again came out, but when I was a cop, you had three options. One, you comply. The second time I come, the owner of the residence goes, gets a citation, and the third time I respond, they go to jail. Do we need, do we need to look into that and look into the policies of the police department? I'm sure that chiefs and the officers would love to do more than that they're allowed to do through policies. I know I was more of a ask-tell-make type guy, so just something to consider. I think before you, in my opinion, before you go further with this action, you look at the cost analysis and let the taxpayers know what that's going to cost you, cost us as citizens. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, we appreciate those comments. So a couple of comments based on that, the $250 application fee or permit fee annually, that's what's prescribed by state law. So we need not kid any taxpayer that short-term rentals are already costing us money.
I totally agree with you. I totally agree. Police response is costing us-
Yeah, it's costing us a lot of money. So with these guardrails put on, the hope, this is what the state is allowing us to do, so then, again, this isn't what we've asked for. These are just the few tools that they've given us to be able to do it, but with these guardrails put on, when, I'm not sure what staff member you talked to about gaining compliance, but we're looking for peaceful coexistence in the neighborhood. If there's a short-term rental tenant that's breaking the law, they'll be cited accordingly, and that's already occurring. But as far as taking action to the short-term rental owner, that makes it very difficult the way the state law was written prior to this revision that just went into effect at the end of September. That's what we're trying to correct here. So the cost reduction hopefully will be less. So right now, when we had, you know, in general zoning, which is one of the tenants of a community, you have a commercial zone where hotels, restaurants, and the like are located. You can then place your police presence or your public safety or whatever that is in one zone and be able to address issues now and pretty readily. Now that we have homes all across our community, we have police and first responders responding all over the community, costing us a lot of money to do that. So we're hopeful that with some of these guardrails put in place, the good neighbor stuff, working with people that manage short-term rentals, people like your company that may expand services based on what this now allows, that we'll be able to have that peaceful enjoyment within our communities, so.
Well, I'm always willing to be a tool. I started this along with the thinking of having clients was being a community service to curtail some of this, but I really think we need to take a more aggressive approach to the tenants as well. And I know that we don't want to publicly identify or make known that we're going to take police action every time a tenant screws up, because it doesn't look good on the city. I get that. I totally get it. And like I said, I'm not opposed to any of these, I just had those questions.
Yeah.
Okay? And hopefully, hopefully I can work well with you guys and come to some sort of assistance, but I've got to let clients come to me. I can't expect any more than that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Hunter. My wife, Lisa, and I are here this evening. We're a owner of a property in town, actually own multiple properties. We have two long-term rental properties, as well as one of our vacation homes, which we choose to also allow guests to stay with us or stay at the property through, whether it's Airbnb or VRBO. So we have other properties in California, and I will say that I do support regulation in this form. Okay? I'm not here to oppose that. We want to provide a good experience for our guests that come and stay, and we want to encourage some dialogue. I don't know, obviously, a lot of this has already taken place before my time. So we're walking in here in a situation that a lot of things have been addressed, and I'd like to understand and learn a little bit more about. But I think too that many times, we focus a lot on what the bad comes along with short-term rental. We as hosts, we're super hosts, we take every experience very seriously. We like to cater to our guests and make sure their experience is good, but we also try to establish the rules and requirements and communicate that as clearly as we can. So I'm just here tonight to just represent ourselves and also just kind of learn a little bit more about what you guys are doing. I did have a couple of questions as we're going through the slides up there. One of them was about violations. It's a three, like a three-strike-you're-out type of thing. Is there any, a little clarity on that, like specifically what those violations could be? There were some bullet points, so we ran through those pretty quickly.
Sure. Yeah. Mr. Kozlowski, you go back to that on the screen?
So it would be one of these four, is that?
The ones listed on here would be for one verified violation, which would result in basically all three strikes. So these are the major violations.
Got it, okay.
As far as the three verified violations, that would consist of noise complaints, an officer being called out to the presence for any type of issue as far as that would be concerned.
Okay. Yeah, because interestingly enough, we use our home quite often, and for example, last night, we were in our backyard, you know, enjoying music, having a barbecue with friends. It's 6 o'clock, I'm getting calls that we are being too noisy, you know? So I think there seems to be some type of clarity. How do we handle that stuff? You know? I think it's a bad use of resources.
Ideally, ideally, that the emergency point of contact would be able to address these issues before they are escalated. So that's the approach that you would-
Okay, yeah, it is actually, we're in, we were in our home, right? And my emergency contact called me and said, hey, I've got an issue, you know, they're letting me out. Hey, we're just sitting in our backyard, enjoying some wine and listening to some music, you know? Okay, like, do we just turn it down? Like, there's a lot of sensitivity around this topic, I get that. So I'm just looking for a way to help my situation, also help the community, make sure it's good for everybody. Cal, you said, you know, we want to have peaceful coexistence, you know? So I guess I'm just looking for some clarity on stuff like that, because we want to make sure we're not in a position where we fall victim to something like that when it's just a very, you know, it's an issue with one specific neighbor that I won't be able to appease at all, no matter what I do.
Yeah, we're pretty good at sniffing those things out. Yeah, it happens often, so.
Okay.
But we do have a noise ordinance, and if you are a violation of the noise ordinance, which at 6:00 PM you would not be-
Correct, yeah.
Unless you were having a very large party.
Yeah.
So- Unless you were having a very large party. So we would address it through a noise ordinance as we would any citizen. So the short-term rentals is one discussion. But when it comes to breaking the law or causing neighborhood issues, it doesn't matter if you're a short-term rental or a homeowner or renter, whatever you are, you'll be cited as such if you're in violation.
Yes. That answered my question. Yeah, thank you very much. So, yeah, that was all I had tonight, guys. And I appreciate you just giving me the time to hear it out. And thank you for what you guys are doing. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And was it Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, Matt Hunter.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Sir, you can also, if you go onto the city's website, you can pull up the entire ordinance and read it. So if you just go to, well, not only the noise ordinance, but what's being proposed tonight. So the violations section is actually like two full pages. So.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely go through that. I've familiarized myself quite a bit with the noise ordinance too.
Yep.
There was, sorry, there was one other note about special events. Can we get a little clarity on that too? Like what would qualify for that? Because I've had people do, you know, where they have family gatherings or a, you know, a family reunion type of things.
That would, that would consist of something where you're charging at the home, having a large number of individuals at that location, which would result in a number of vehicles taking up street access for the residents. So that was what would be considered a special event in that type of location.
Got it. Makes sense. Appreciate your time, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And the special events is already in state law. So that's already, yeah, that's not a change this evening. All right. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this matter?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I can make one point, just to kind of highlight this slide that talks about the, how violations are considered. And there's four bullet points there. These are not four bullet points that Lake Havasu City identified. These are not four bullet points that any other city in like, in Arizona identified. This is what our legislatures adopted through the legislative process. It's a state statute, and the words are literally cut and paste from that into our ordinance. And this is the path that we follow. So any concerns in terms of what this looks like? This is what the state says you must do. So just want to make that point. Oh, Kelly Gary, our city attorney, is correcting me in terms of the suspension, but these are the four bullet points that would result in a suspension.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any comments or questions for members of the council? Councilmember Campbell?
Question?
Yes.
A lot of the constituents that I have been talking to have some concerns about occupancies. And I know in other states, they have occupancies right on their signs that we're not allowed to do. And first and foremost, I don't really know how to enforce that. Thus, we hate to be the front desk of every VRBO. But how, is there any way that we can look at that? Is there a certain occupancy? Because I've been told that some bedrooms have up to four bunk beds or triple bunk beds and cars and so on. So is there anything in this ordinance that we can address occupancy, number one? And number two is that the state will even allow us to do that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, unfortunately, that was not something that was included in legislation, as well as it's very difficult to enforce. But unfortunately, that's something we can't do with this current legislation.
But as long as they're having certain violations, go through the process, reach out to your contact, and hopefully enough noise back at them, letting them know that it is quite cumbersome to have a small 1,800 or 1,600 or 1,500 square foot home with 20 people all crashing there. It's not being very neighborly, I would say. Right? Thank you.
That would bring up other violations that would fall under this statute.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Is there a motion from a member of the council?
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 22-1297, declaring the document entitled 2022 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 5.20 Vacation Rentals, November 22, 2022, a public record and amending Chapter 5.20 by reference.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.4 is approved statements of work with Camtra Technologies LLC for Oracle Cloud Human Capital Management, HCM, and Benefits Health Check Help Desk, Health and Safety, Recruiting and Onboarding, and Knowledge-Based Training Modules and the HCM Managed Service Support Contract for 2022, 2023, to provide technical help desk support for Oracle Cloud HCM Support. Ms. Hamilton?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The matter before you this evening is the consideration of adoption of the statement of work to contract with Camtra Technologies LLC to assist with the implementation of the Human Capital Management modules of our current Oracle Cloud platform. We currently hold licenses for the Human Capital Management and Benefits Module Help Desk, Health and Safety, Recruiting and Onboarding, and Knowledge-Based Training Modules. Additionally, we are requesting approval for a statement of work related to an annual managed service contract to provide technical help desk support for all of these modules, including our core HCM, which we currently own. The implementation of these modules will allow us to improve our utilization and effectiveness of the Oracle platform. Presently, many of the processes associated with these modules are performed manually. Although Oracle is a system of record for the city, by not offering or utilizing these modules, we're forced to create redundant systems that do not effectively integrate information and increase the possibility of human error. For instance, we presently utilize an applicant tracking system platform called NeoGov for our recruitment and onboarding processes. All of the information that we enter into NeoGov to recruit and hire people then has to be duplicated and re-entered into the Oracle system once we hire the individual for the job. By implementing the Oracle module, we'll eliminate the annual subscription cost for NeoGov, which is $45,000 a year that we spend. The Help Desk and Knowledge-Based Modules will enhance our ability to utilize the self-service aspects of Oracle, improving the employee's ability to resolve personnel needs on their own convenience. So it encourages them to use the self-service aspects of the platform. The Health and Safety Modules will provide a convenient way for the department to track health and safety incidences. Presently, health and safety are reported through a manual process that requires considerable follow-up because half the time, people don't fill out the form right, and we don't get the information that we need. The module will provide the analytics that will give us information about the types of incidences that we have for health and safety, and will allow us to provide follow-up to ensure that we have adequate information, and then we can identify trends and things that are happening with our health and safety. By proactively managing health and safety of our employees, we anticipate a 35% reduction in savings to our risk pool with an estimated $200,000 savings. It's an offset. In addition, we hope to improve our productivity because it takes a lot of time to follow up on those incidences. The implementation of the HCM and Benefits Module will allow us to fully utilize the HCM core module currently in use and promote more effective reporting. We have a lot of data that goes into Oracle and we can't get it out. So part of it would be to use that information so we have the information we need to more proactively manage our capital assets. By implementation of this module, it's our intent to improve reporting capabilities and to eliminate current costs of approximately $7,000 to $10,000 where we have to hire outside entities to do some of our federal government reporting, like the Affordable Care Act as an example. So quite frankly, I think that the amount of savings we anticipate having will result in this cost paying for what we're asking you to approve tonight. These agreements will provide technical expertise for a total of $250,700, with an additional $60,000 for service ticket resolution for a total cost of $310,700. These funds are included in the fiscal year 2022-2023 general fund budget, and it's anticipated this project will take approximately one year to complete. Thank you for your attention, and at this time, we'll entertain any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Hamilton. Are there any questions from members of the council? With a presentation like that, how could we have questions? You answered everything.
You can't. Just vote yes.
All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lane?
Motion?
Please.
Something about dazzling with your brilliance? I move to approve the statements of work with Camtra Technologies LLC for the Oracle Cloud Human Capital Management, HCM, and Benefits Health Check Help Desk, Health and Safety, Recruiting and Onboarding, and Knowledge-Based Training Modules, and the HCM Managed Service Support Contract for 2022-23, to provide technical help desk support of Oracle Cloud HCM Support in the amount of $310,700, and authorize the city manager to sign the statements of work.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8.5 is approve the Perpetual Enterprise LMS License Agreement, Support and Maintenance Agreement, and the LMS Hosting Agreement with Mainstar Inc. for the land management software system used for permitting, planning, and zoning cases, code enforcement cases, and business licenses. Mr. Tunneman?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's going to be a tough one to follow up on there. But this item before you is for the purchase, implementation, and support of a new land management software system to replace the city's existing Sun Guard HD system for permitting, planning, and zoning, code enforcement cases, and business licenses. The current land management system was originally installed in 2002. The reporting and permitting systems are out of date, ineffective, and requires additional staff time to administer in use. The purchase of a new land management system was included in development services budget for the fiscal year, and requests for proposals was sent out in May. The request for proposals specified the minimum specifications and evaluation criteria. Eight proposals were received, and the selection committee evaluated and participated in live demonstrations from the three most qualified vendors. The committee's evaluation tabulation determined Mainstar Inc. met all specifications and is the most comprehensive product to meet the city's needs. For the first time, citizens will have the ability to apply for permits online and submit plans digitally. Once submitted, the applications will calculate any required fees, which can be paid online, and activate pre-established workflows that will route the submission to appropriate city staff for action. As workflows progress, the processes will be accessible to the applicant and to all city staff. The system will facilitate mobile field access for building inspectors and code enforcement officers, allowing them to enter inspection findings in real time, which will then become immediately accessible to the applicant. The implementation of the Mainstar system will improve the efficiency of the city's permit process and record management while significantly decreasing the annual licensing fee and the amount of paper accompanying permit applications. $500,000 was budgeted for the purchase of the new land management software system. The Mainstar implementation is priced at $187,500 with an annual maintenance and licensing fee of approximately $50,000. Implementation is to take approximately 12 months, and once implemented, it will save the city approximately $137,000 in annual licensing fees. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tunneman. You did a great job too. All right. We're doing great here tonight. Are there any questions for Mr. Tunneman?
I want to just say thank you for moving forward with this program. I know how viable this is going to be for our community and the staff, and thank you.
You're welcome. Our staff is very excited as well.
Ours will be too.
Yeah, it seems pretty, especially in today's tech world, elementary that you could do this. But right now, we don't have the ability to be able to do any of this stuff. So we're still stuck in 2002 by way of what the technology allows us for us to do. But just the cost savings alone on the annual licensing is going to save taxpayer dollars immediately. So.
And the other thing is, a lot of these contractors are up a lot earlier than even the offices open, and they're out working, doing this kind of work in the evening after they've been out in the field all day. So this is very vital to the community and for the staff. Thank you again.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments before we open the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I move to approve the Perpetual Enterprise LMS License Agreement, Support and Maintenance Agreement, LMS Hosting Agreement, and the Statement of Work between Lake Havasu City and Mainstar Inc. in the amount of $187,500, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreements on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Yeah, thank you. Item 8.6 is approved cooperative purchase agreement for the purchase of security infrastructure from Stone Security. Mr. Baskett?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. More IT items for you guys tonight. For this item, we are requesting your approval to purchase security infrastructure from Stone Security for the new courthouse. This purchase, well, security infrastructure is pretty broad term. So for this item, we're focusing in on the cameras, access control, panic buttons, cabling installation, and equipment configuration. Most of the stuff you know about access control, it's how you get in and out of the buildings. Panic buttons is something a little unique to us. We're going to be installing those in the courtrooms as well as multi-use rooms. If there's an issue and the judge and his administration need to exit, they hit the panic button, it opens the rear doors for a period of time. Once they leave, it locks them. If we didn't have those in place, if you want to leave the courtroom out of the back, you would have to badge in to get back in the back. So having these in place is going to add a lot of security to this location, as well as other rooms. We're going to put in other locations throughout the facilities. The judge is going to have one in his office as well because he'll have visibility into what's going on in the courts. So the infrastructure is actually going to be an extension of the city's current security infrastructure. It will tie into the software that we use. All of the video will write to the data center. It will store all the video as well as the access to the building as well. Benefits of that is that the city's police department will have direct communication with the courthouse. They will always have visibility of the cameras, what's going on in the facilities if they need to. In the event a panic alarm is triggered, not only will the security desk in the front be notified, but the police dispatch will be notified as well. They have a large screen TV in the dispatch center. If an alarm is triggered in the security system, it'll display on the board that there's an alarm. It will also then zoom into the cameras because the access control is tied into the cameras, and it'll show them the actual location of the alarm. So there's a lot of security benefits to that. Another benefit is the court staff will have the ability to actually secure the facilities from their desk. We don't want them walking around keys. We don't want them to have to lock the doors and go through, you know, the normal lobby areas and things like that. So at the end of the day, those identified with access, they'll be able to log into the system. They'll be able to lock the entire courthouse for the evening and go home. They'll be able to do the same in the morning. In addition to that, there will be locate, they will be able to cordon off certain areas as well. If there's an emergency, PD will have this access as well. They can lock down certain courtrooms. So there's a lot of benefit to the security we're implementing, and you know, it's really just an extension of what we have. So we're not really having to buy anything new and replace what we have throughout the city. The total cost of this is $186,301.05. It was budgeted in this year's budget as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baskett. Are there any questions, Mr. Baskett, for members of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I heard you say that it's going to be tied to our current security system. Is there an additional cost to do this monitoring at that location, at the courthouse?
No, we just pay an annual maintenance, and it's already included.
Yeah, Mr. Baskett, can you talk a little bit about the design of this? So there are some requirements from the Supreme Court, and then the judge and his team. and his team were, were involved, and then your team, uh, city administration.
Yeah, there's, yeah, exactly. There's, uh, well, there's, you've got multiple networks in this facility. You're going to have the security network that we identify. You also have the AOC network, which is a whole separate network from the city. Um, it is controlled and monitored through, from the actual AOC themselves. We provide them a gateway. Um, as far as the security goes, there's not a, there's not a lot of, uh, oversight from them on that piece of it, uh, but they do, they're very strict on data, how it's accessed, where it's stored, that type of thing. So we do have to follow all of those parameters that they put in place.
Yeah, very good. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Lane?
Thank you. And just for the people that, that haven't watched us use the acronym AOC, can you explain what that is?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's administrative of the courts. So the administrative of the courts, they're the governing bodies for the Arizona courts.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the Cooperative Purchase Agreement and purchase of security infrastructure in the amount of $186,301.05 from Stone Security LLC.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. And our final public hearing this evening is item 8.7, approved the Cooperative Purchase Agreement and purchase of audiovisual products from E1 Audio Visual Technologies. Mr. Baskett?
All right, thank you. Uh, we have another courthouse item for you. Uh, these items were coming today as, are very long lead items, that's why we're asking for those so soon. Uh, for this request, we're asking an interim agreement with E1. They're, they're also known as Exhibit One, um, as the contractor for audiovisual. E1 is, they're one of the largest, uh, municipal AV contractors, um, in the state of Arizona. Um, I believe they have over 50 courthouses that they implement and maintain their systems for. Uh, this contract, they will install, configure, and support AV equipment for the courtrooms, uh, jury rooms, multi-use spaces, and the lobby. Um, each courtroom will have a dedicated AV system, um, with up to four displays. Uh, the jury boxes will also have three displays themselves, 22-inch monitors, so that they can see evidence and other digital data that's transmitted from legal teams. There's going to be a camera systems for viewing, evidence podiums, audio systems, and touchscreen displays for controlling the court sessions. Uh, the admin, the court administrator and the judge will be able to control it from his location, any of the audio, muting mics, those types of things, when they approach the bench. Um, within the judge's office, there will be large screen TVs installed. The judge will have the ability to view all court sessions. He, that's also going to give him the ability, like we said earlier, panic buttons. So if he's watching and he's, he's reviewing what's going on in the courts, and there's an issue, and they can't get the panic button, or they forget, he'll be able to hit his panic button, and we'll be able to program those so that it'll, when it goes to dispatch, it'll show all three courtrooms on their screens. That way, PD can dissect which courtroom is having the issue. The lobby will have digital dockets to display court schedules. You'll have one primary digital docket that displays the entire schedule for each courtroom, and then individual dockets on the wall outside of each court, courtroom for displaying to that schedule that day. Total cost for this contract is $584,776.52. That was put in the budget for, for this year, so if you have any more questions on there or want to discuss further, be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Baskett. Are there any questions or comments, members of the council? Yes, just as a reminder, when we approved the, uh, renovation cost for, uh, the courthouse, these items were listed. So these are the items that were listed as additional cost. Uh, there still will be the, um, uh, furniture fixture and equipments that will come, come forth, but as, as Mr. Baskett said, uh, these items have a long lead time, and so if we don't get them with some supply chain issues, we could run into delays in getting the courthouse open, uh, hopefully in a year or so from, from now. So any questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve Cooperative Purchase Agreement with E1 Audio Visual Technologies, utilizing the Arizona State Contract for the purchase of audiovisual equipment in the amount of $584,776.52.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. Item nine is our current events. Are there any, uh, council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I don't know if I can use this time or not to talk about the town hall that I attended last week.
Sure.
That'd be okay?
Yeah, please.
Use this time?
Yes.
Um, so I had the privilege of attending the state town hall in Tempe last week on substance abuse, um, mental health and homelessness, and this was a really intense and eye-opening experience that lasted three days. It was really awesome representing Lake Havasu, Mojave County, and it was a little bit unfortunate to see the lack of representation from our area at this event. But the good news is, I made a lot of connections and brought back a lot of great information that will help us as a city and a county to be proactive as we tackle these difficult topics. Uh, we are really fortunate that Havasu hasn't been hit as hard as other areas in Arizona in regards to these issues. But with that being said, we need to stay one foot ahead in tackling these issues, as they will begin to grow in our city. Uh, we cannot ignore the fact that homelessness, mental health, and substance use is not immune to Lake Havasu. We need to collaborate as a city, government, and a community to work together, to be proactive as these issues will grow in our city. And I personally look forward to advocating for those collaborations to make sure that this happens within the selected body. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. Yeah, that's a, a big commitment, three days, and it's, uh, it is intense, and I.
It was great.
I'm glad that you were there representing Lake Havasu City in our interest and, and sharing our viewpoint. Thank you. Yes.
Mayor, can I get an update on the PED building? I've had a lot of people asking questions. Um, Councilmember Moses, do you have any updates on that?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses is our PED, uh, liaison.
Yeah, uh, they just, uh, we gave us an update in the last meeting, um, kind of just shifting everything back a little bit. Let's say two, three weeks past prior to where they were before. Um, it's kind of a mad dash here at the end. It, it's not going to make it by the first of the year. Uh, I mean, not going to make it this year, they're, they're looking into January, February now.
One more quick question. They were wondering about, like, the business model. Is that coming up, that people can reach out and find out more about, other than just reaching, like, someplace on, online that they can go?
Yeah, they have a website, and then you also can reach out to the PED, talk to James and/or Amy personally.
Thank you.